Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance this evening and ask you to join me first of all in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Hi, present.
Mitchell Moffett. Excused. Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Lerman. Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield. Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are six members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers that are appointed by your city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings can be brought, are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable Channel PSC 191, and they will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on demand link there and make your selection of which meeting you want to watch. There are also copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table this evening, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to silence your cell phones to prevent any interruptions during the meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your city of address, or sorry, city of address for your records. You don't need to state your full address, just the city and your name. Also, tonight, we've added a timer feature. This is now for all meetings, council and otherwise, and we have a timer, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks, and at the end of three minutes, it'll be signaling that your time is up, so that'll help keep us all on track and also keep our comments brief. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair but to appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration regarding any of the items on the agenda? I'll note, as I did last month, that I am on the board of one of the CDBG applicants, so I will recuse myself from that vote, but I believe we still have a quorum if I recuse myself, correct? Second, is there anyone in the audience that this evening that would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. We, as the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the official record of the city council we use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The first item on tonight's agenda is the meeting minutes, which are from September 21st, 2023. The meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time, and I trust you've had an opportunity to take a look, and if there are no questions or comments on the meeting minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. I still move. All right. Commissioner Handler has moved, and Commissioner Lerman has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show, the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We have no old or unfinished business on the agenda, so we'll move right into our public hearing section of our agenda, and the first item on the public hearing agenda is the CDBG CV2 Department of Commerce Grant Closeout, and I will turn it over to Ms. Webb for that.
Good evening, Commission. Tonight, the first item I'll be speaking about is the CDBG CV Department of Commerce Grant Closeout. In April of 2021, the Community Development Block Grant Program was awarded $145,000 from the Department of Commerce for CDBG CV coronavirus funds aimed at microenterprises activities. This grant aimed to provide critical support to businesses that have been adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. However, due to the availability of other funding sources for businesses during this period, a decision was made to amend the grant's purpose. In May of 2022, the grant was reallocated to support CDBG CV eligible public service activities benefiting seniors in the community through the Meals on Wheels program. The amendment allowed the city to meet pressing community needs while complying with applicable and federal guideline for CDBG funding. The Meals on Wheels program involves a dedicated staff that is entirely focused on serving the senior residents within the city. From meal preparation to delivery, the team ensures that nutritious and balanced meals are consistently provided to this vulnerable population. The wages for these staff members are calculated based on 100% dedicated to Pasco clients, ensuring focused and localized service. This approach aligns with the municipality's commitment to support the low to moderate income senior residents. During the grant period of July 2022 to June 2023, the Meals on Wheels served a total of 614 seniors in the city of Pasco. This effort resulted in the distribution of 23,546 meals. As you can see on this slide, this is the projected, the project beneficiary of seniors served in Pasco for 2022 and 2023, and then on the next slide, it is broken up by the racial ethic breakdown, so that, so with that, Mr. Chairman, you will need to open up the public hearing for any comments.
Very much. Can commissioners ask questions before we ask?
Of course they can.
Okay, so I'll start with commissioners, if there's any questions for staff on this item. Sounds like there are none, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this item, which is the CDBG-CV2 Department of Commerce Grant Closeout? All right, we'll make the second call. Is there anyone here to speak on this agenda item? And we'll make the final third call. Anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, with that, the public hearing closes, and the next step in this, I entertain a motion from the commissioners. It's been noted on the page, which the motion is really closing this out and directing staff to forward comments to the Department of Commerce, I believe. Okay.
The next step would be to complete the grant closeout report, which then will be forwarded to the city manager's office for signature and incorporating any comments from the public hearing into that report, and then sending to the Department of Commerce for the closeout of the grant.
Thank you. And were there any, I mean, I think there's other, are there other sources of comments, like could people mail or email or?
Yes, they could have. We sent out a public notice in the newspaper.
Okay, perfect. Well, commissioners, if there's no questions or comments on this item, I'd entertain a motion.
Commissioner Lerman, I move the Planning Commission close the public hearing on the use of funds for the CDBG CV grant and direct staff to forward any comments to Department of Commerce.
Commissioner Lerman has moved, Commissioner Handler has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, the motion passed unanimously. All right, the second item on the agenda for the public hearing is the 2024 Community Block Grant Development Block Grant Program allocations, and again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Webb.
So again, tonight, this has been in front of you all several times, and so I just wanted to reiterate that what the intent of the Community Development Block Grant Program is, is to provide annual grants on a formula basis to state, cities, and counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low to moderate income persons. As a reminder, staff identified a criteria to align with council goals, the Tri-Cities Consortium Consolidated Plan, partial funding possibilities for projects, and whether the applicant's projects met the intent of the CDPG head mission. The applicants were given a score based on how many goals their project met the criteria. On the next slide, this is the option that staff recommended last month for the 2024 allocations, which is only city projects. On the next slide, this is option B. At the last meeting, the commission wanted to see an option with non-city activities. With the non-city activities being all public service, the cap is 15% of the estimated entitlement in prior year resources and any program income. The cap is 107,471, and staff allocated approximately 62% to each applicant in an effort to max out each request for funding. While this does not fully fund each request, it does distribute funds to each applicant. And on this slide, hold on, Jacob, one more, yeah, as you can see, it does not meet the amount that we were estimating, which was the 716,474. On the next slide, this option is C. This was the hybrid option that you requested with a mixture of city and non-city activities. With this option, staff allocated 10% to public service activities and 90% to city activities, while in the past years, the 15% public service cap was met and maxed out. But there were not as many public service, public service applicants as we have seen this year. With all the applications, being 21 applications in all, this has been the most application since the city has been receiving CDPG funding. We did get some questions from one of the city planning commissioners, which we did forward to you guys in an email, as well as gave you a paper copy, so if you had any questions on that. And then on the next slide, this is just a breakdown of all options, A, B, C, and their percentages. So with that, I will take any questions or comments, and then we need to open it up to the public hearing again.
Excellent, thank you. To clarify, so option B, I think what I'm reading, and it should be obvious, I guess, is that we're leaving 226,000 on the table if we break it out that way. Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, are there questions on these different options? And I appreciate staff going to the extra trouble. The thing I'll say about this is that we've got to get this closed out, for one thing, and because we have applicants waiting to hear, and we have the city council still actually having to make the final decision. We are just recommenders, so I'm hoping we can close this item out tonight. Staff has done an amazing amount of due diligence in responding to our questions, but with that, I'll open it up to your questions and comments. I think effectively, we have three options to choose from. One of those options leaves money on the table, which is probably not a great option, so we kind of, but we also, the other, the other option we have is we can also be in a position where we have some suggested changes, but again, if we get into that mode, we'll be here all night, so I would recommend that we kind of go, staff has put a huge amount of scoring and diligence and risk assessment into these. I would suggest we ask questions, get clarifications, but we try to move forward on that. But with that, I'll open up for questions.
Hi, this is Commissioner Torres. I just have one question. In option B, would we be able to, I mean, I feel like this would be maxing out the public service funding, right, to reach that limit, and then would we not then be able to use the remaining amount for the city projects?
Yes, we would. The only reason we left option B the way that it was is that was what you guys had requested.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification.
Yep, sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for, right? So we asked for that option, and we got it, so. Any other commissioners have questions or feedback? Okay, hearing none. I will open up the public hearing for comments or any of the applicants that want to present on their, their option at all. I believe we got most of them taken care of, but if there are any here that we, or any of the public that wish to speak on any of these items, now is the time to do that. So I'll make the first call. Is there anyone here to speak on this particular agenda item tonight? All right, second call. Is there anyone here to speak on this agenda item? And final call to speak on this agenda item tonight. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing, and commissioners, it comes back to us. So if there are any more questions or comments or clarifications for staff, otherwise, I would entertain motions or ideas or discussions on next steps on this. I think probably what we have is we have an option to move, to accept and recommend option A, B, or C. We also have the option to do nothing, but I would hate to see us just sit on this another week, month. And again, this goes to city council, and city council could change their mind. In fact, city council could actually take our option A, B, or C, and they could further modify those. So I think we are just here to say, hey, we did our due diligence, so did staff, here's our recommendations. But further, one of the applicants could show up in city council and lobby for their position as well. So I think there's lots of steps here, or a couple of steps here left, so I'll just leave it for you to, and I'm going to recuse myself for voting, but I'm open it up for motions for any of the options.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rosa.
Oh, I was gonna say, this, Commissioner Torres, I was just gonna say, I agree with you that this needs to move forward. I personally just want to comment that I would have liked to have seen, like, my idea of the hybrid option would have been basically option B, where we max out, or we get to the full amount of funding public service, and then whatever's left over, then we can use that for city services. And I say that because I think the items that we had on the city list, I still have concern about that being sustainable over the long run, that these are not one-time items. There's maybe like the one of the study for the ADA, you know, the sidewalks, that may be just like a point-in-time project that could be done with this funding, but like the funding of the positions and the roles that are needed for, you know, to go forward and that we need as a city. I'm just concerned with the sustainability of funding those with grant money. So that would be my only comment and concern to, to make sure is voiced at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres. I think that's a valid point. I think, you know, we can pass that recommendation and feedback to city council as well, and they can certainly take our recommendations and tweak them a little to meet that, that goal. The other thing is, one of the things we should do is, I wonder in the future, Jacob, if there's an approach we can take on these where the commission workshops on these and comes up with our own slate, rather than, you know, because I think it's pretty hard for staff to keep guessing what we want, and so if we did a workshop kind of approach, it might be a better way to approach this, not this year, but maybe future years.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, the other two cities, they actually do that. They give you the applications, they let the applicants come and talk, and then you guys kind of converse of who you would like to see funded. But I would also like to highlight that several of the public service activities of the applicants who have applied for CDPG funds in Pasco this year and in several years have also applied in the other two cities, being Kennewick and Richland. And the funding trend in Kennewick, Richland, and Walla Walla also indicates that the majority of funds are allocated to city projects.
Information, thank you. Yeah, I think if, you know, the other thing, I think the other thing is, this is, with so many applicants, a workshop starts to make more sense as well, so. Okay, all right.
Well, like I said last month, I really applaud your work that you've done and taken in our input, and coming back to a computer and drawing board and creating rubrics and trying to be as transparent as possible, and so thank you. I really feel like that honors the work of the nonprofits and as well as the city and what you guys do to be able to deliver services to our community, and so I really mean a heartfelt thank you. With that, I move the Planning Commission close the public hearing on the land use. Whoops, wrong one. Where did that motion go? Think I'll take a pause. Thank you. I move the Planning Commission close the public hearing on the use of funds for 2024 Community Block Grant Program. I further move that the Planning Commission forward recommendations as presented to the city council workshop for consideration of option C.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Lerman, is seconded by Commissioner Handler, to move this forward as option C, as a recommendation to city council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, we, let the record show, we had one nay, and the rest, I'm recused, and the rest, and so it did pass with a quorum, I believe, but there, we will, we'll note that nay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't unclick mine as fast enough. I also have a nay. This is Commissioner Torres.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Torres, what was your comment?
Sorry, I, oh, I didn't click, I didn't click my unmute fast enough. I'm also a nay.
You were also a nay? So how many votes do we have? Because I'm recused, so we have three, three and two? So three and two, the motion still carries. All right, thank you. All right, the final agenda on our public hearing, agenda item on our public hearing this evening is the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments Docket application. I will start off as just kind of giving some guidance on this and also just laying, give us a lay of the land. I think it's important. This is, this is a process that is allowed for by the comprehensive plan that the city goes through. What we are considering tonight is not a rezone, not a land use decision, not a project, not a code approval or anything like that. What we are considering is whether the applicant is allowed to apply, and we are considering whether the application meets the criteria set forth by the city to apply and to be accepted onto the docket. What we are not doing is we are not approving any project to be done. We're not approving a zone change. All we're proving is whether the applicant deserves the ability to be heard in the process. So I think this can be an emotional issue. There are definitely, I think most of you are here to speak on it. We encourage you to come forward and speak on the things you care about and what matters to you, but we are not approving any decision tonight. All we're saying is, should the applicant be allowed to be on the application process? And so I just want to make sure we all understand that regardless of what decisions are made tonight, this is not the end. There will be numerous, numerous opportunities for the public and others to comment. Anybody applying for a zoning change or a project or anything will have to go through all of the normal process before anything gets done to any piece of property that's being considered here. So I just want to make sure we all understand that, because it can be an emotional issue. And then I'll close with, it is an emotional issue, so let's all try to be respectful of each other's views. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jacob to introduce this item.
Commissioner, and good evening, commissioners. As Commissioner Cochran stated, this is the first step of, essentially two major steps associated with amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan in general should be considered a living document so that it doesn't remain static and remains adaptable to the needs of a rapidly growing community. To ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan, the Growth Management Act directs cities like Pasco to create a docket, which this is attempting to do. That clearly identifies an amendment via the application and the proposals to be considered. The application window for the 2023 cycle ran effectively from January through early May, and the city received one privately initiated application, which is the subject of this evening's discussion. I want to highlight the criteria adopted by the Pasco City Council as outlined in Pasco Municipal Code Title 25, 215, and the primary questions that form the staff recommendation are on the screen for the review today, and those criteria are, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision? Will the city be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop a policy or related development regulations? Has the proposed amendment been previously rejected for consideration? Will the amendment implement and comply with the adopted comprehensive plan and the Washington State Growth Management Act? And is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? And we'll come back to these at the end of the presentation. So we've got one application that was submitted for this year's docket, that is CPA 2023-001. The proposal is to amend just under three acres, approximately 2.6 acres, covering two separate parcels from the current low-density residential to the mixed residential and commercial land use. There was a SEPA environmental checklist conducted on the land use proposal itself, and a determination of nonsignificance was issued in June 2023. So the next several slides show several maps that illustrate the site and the proposal. This is just a general vicinity map. It's a thin red line. You can see the site pointing at the two parcels. This is located at the intersection of West Argent and Road 100 on the southwest, southeast corner of that intersection.
Could you point that out exactly? Come up there and point that out.
If, yeah, I, sure.
A lot of people can't see.
Sure. Yes, there's two separate parcels that total equate to roughly 2.86 acres. This is the city's comprehensive plan future land use map. In here, you can see that the site is currently classified with the low-density residential land use. Further up to the north and west of Broadmoor, you have much more diverse array of land uses, from medium density to commercial. And further east on Argent, you see several civic uses associated with schools, with Pasco School District, and some medium density and mixed residential commercial up along the Chapel Hill Boulevard corridor. This is the land use map, and this is the zoning map, which is always difficult to see, but here you can see the site's current zone of RS20. It is surrounded by mostly RS20, a few RS12s, R3 It is surrounded by uh mostly RS twenty, a few RS twelves, uh R three, which is uh typically a higher density uh and a few other uh zoning districts around it. So I'll shuffle through these just to get a general idea of what the site, where the site is located and the current land use and the zone associated with the land use. So here's a general vicinity map. Here's the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, and this proposal is seeking to change the land use from low density to mixed residential commercial, which pro permits a variety of residential and or light commercial uses. And then here's the zoning map. I want to reiterate that uh while the planning commission has a role to play in the land use uh decisions associated with sites that the zone changes are not conducted through the planning commission. Uh, those are separate public hearings held um at a later time if deemed necessary, depending on what the project requires or what the applicant is proposing, those meetings are held and conducted uh with the Pasco Hearing Examiner with final decisions made by City Council. So I wanted to highlight the criteria again uh and go over that for the uh review of both the planning commission and the public here in the audience and those listening online. Uh, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision? Uh, staff's recommendation is yes, this is only one proposal. Uh, we've certainly uh uh processed uh significantly higher proposals as as demonstrated last year. Uh, so there is certainly sufficient time for council to make an informed decision this year or uh with this proposal. Uh, will the city be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy and related development regulations as this is a land use only decision? Uh, it is staff's recommendation that the answer is yes to this criteria. This proposal has not yet uh been subject to a previously rejected um proposal, so the answer to that question is no. Uh, the Washington State Growth Management Act allows for cities to amend the Comprehensive Plan uh uh once annually unless there's an emergency, this is certainly not an emergency. Uh, but there is a provision to allow for cities uh and counties to amend their Comprehensive Plan if they go through the process at least one uh a minimum of once per year, sorry, maximum of once per year. Uh, so the answer to this question is yes, it would comply with the general guidelines associated with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and G M A process. And is this proposed amendment better addressed through another process? And the answer to that is no. Um, if this was seeking a zone change, there would be a separate process associated with that. The applicant is proposing a land use change and the land use change must go through the Pasco Planning Commission and City Council and follow uh both their criteria uh that are on the screen today. I'm sorry, on the screen for you this evening and then uh the evaluation criteria, which would be determined at a later time. So next steps uh following the public hearing uh uh is a recommendation from the planning commission. That recommendation, either a yes or a no, uh would then be forwarded to the Pasco City Council for a de a decision in November. That decision would only establish the docket, meaning that this application would be allowed to move forward in the evaluation process. And during that evaluation process, staff would evaluate the proposal based on the criteria uh indicated in the Pasco Municipal Code, again in Title twenty five. And then bring back a recommendation based on the merits of the application and the criteria back to the planning commission for a set of workshops and public hearings, uh followed by a recommendation from the planning commission and then an eventual um uh meeting with the City Council for a final decision. Uh, again, this is simply a land use matter, a land use um proposal, there is no project. There is no zone change associated with this land use proposal, it's simply at this point, step one of potentially a very long process as called for in the Pasco Municipal Code, so uh with that, happy to go back to any of the slides uh in the presentation um and uh answer any questions I can from the planning commission this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so to reiterate, we're at step one. Should the applicant be allowed to be on the docket? And if that is the case, the evaluation for whether a land use change is acceptable in the Comprehensive Plan. And after that, they still have to go through the zoning hurdles, they have to go through any project and code hurdles. And so we're just really at step one about whether the applicant should be allowed to be received into the process based and the the decision criteria is what was on the screen before, does the applicant qualify based on the criteria set forth? And so that's what we're considering. We're not considering the merits of the project or whether we agree. All we're doing is considering whether this is a applicant can be accepted in the process. So with that, commissioners, if you have questions for staff, um that would be a great time.
If if I may add, um I know this is a, this is a public hearing, so I have to open that up, but we did receive uh several communications from members of the community. Those have been shared with the planning commission, so I just want to put that on the record.
Yeah, thank you, we have those in our emails, if you didn't get a chance to read over those, they should be in everybody's emails, there were um lots of uh feedback, as I'm sure we'll get lots of feedback tonight.
Commissioner Crutchfield, I have a question for staff. I believe you mentioned, and thank you for providing the colored map, because we didn't have that at the last meeting, so this is most helpful. Because it clearly shows that all surrounding this proposal, um as you said, it's RS twenty, which is mostly low density residential, which it has been for some time, I believe, like for since its development. And um, so I I understand you say no project is associated with this at this time. But to me, that kind of it means it's kind of a card that can be played in any fashion in the future then, if this goes further. I mean, if there's no specific project attached with this, it's simply a blanket commercial or increased density.
If this proposal goes through the process, it and hypothetically, um just for um education, I guess, this evening, if this proposal is accepted, placed on the docket and then adopted as in approved, meaning the land use goes from low density to mixed residential, commercial. Um, the current zone of RS twenty would not be in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, therefore um in order for anything to to happen there in conformance with the common plan, a rezone would likely be necessary. A rezone requires a public hearing and notification and and an environmental checklist. That is a public hearing that is conducted with the Pasco Hearing Examiner. Um, and then the recommendation from the Hearing Examiner is then sent to City Council for final decision. If that were to, so we're kind of playing a lot of hypotheticals here, but if that were to move all the way forward, say, for instance, the applicant wanted or the property wanted to move forward with an R one designation would require the rezone, that has to go to council. And now they want a project to implement the intent of the R one, which could be anything from a single family detached home to potentially duplex, depending on the layout and associated factors. That project then has to go through the Development Review Process that is administered to Pasco um city staff. Um, so there's, there's numerous steps associated with this. I I think it might be helpful um to also go through the approval criteria. If this were placed on the docket, the next set of criteria that is uh this project would have to be based on uh include um a long list of criteria, but I'll I'll give a brief summary for the planning commission and public today, and those include um is the proposed amendment consistent with the requirements of the Growth Management Act? And the city's adopted Comprehensive Plan not affected by the amendment, is the amendment correcting an obvious mapping error? We had several of those map corrections last year, you may recall. Does the amendment address and identify deficiency in the Comprehensive Plan? What is the effect upon the physical environment, the effect on both natural um habitat and environmental habitats? Compatibility with uh impact on adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods? The adequacy of and impact on community facilities, including utilities, roads, public transportation, parks, recreation, schools? Um, does the proposed land use amendment um in increase or decrease a known need of certain land uses? So uh land proposed for a commercial, land proposed residential, does it increase or decrease that in a way that aligns with City Council goals? And the effect of any uh on the other aspects of the Comprehensive Plan? So step two is where staff um really takes any app, it takes the proposal and sort of uh reviews it at a much more detailed level, again, only at the land use level. And then depending on the recommendation associated with that review, that comes back to the planning commission and then back to City Council and through that process, so. For example, we had several, we had eighteen land use, sixteen land use amendments adopted last year, several of those have yet to move forward because there's a lengthy process associated with those, so. It 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 at this point, we we're not sure what the intent of the land use is, but the application only asks for the land use amendment um to meet the criteria as adopted by the City Council as shown on the screen. Not sure if I answered your question, but certainly happy to attempt again.
It was a long answer, but um yes, kind of, um basically, this is just permitting a variety of mixed residential and commercial, but nothing is actually for sure at this point, it is, so this is one step forward. Okay, and, okay, thank you, I I have more questions later, thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I'd point out on this is that there are other places, other cities and other places in the country where you know, if an applicant is denied based on qualifying with the criteria, it actually bodes even worse for the citizens and the city. And so we want to make sure that we are being, following our process and we're following the criteria that's set forth by the Comprehensive Plan because it could be at our peril to deny it for emotional or other reasons versus anything other than the criteria. So I just want to caution us as a commission um that our job is to qualify by the criteria, not whether we believe we like the project or not, or the land use change or not. Other questions or comments from the commissioners? And on the phone, please, please speak up, commissioners on the phone, if you have questions or comments. Okay, I'm hearing none, so I think we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Um, again, we, looks like we have lots of folks to speak on this item tonight, and we welcome that because it's our opport our opportunity to hear what you think. Um, I will make sure that we all know that we have a lot of people to get through, so we, that's one of the things we have for council and commission meetings is the timer. Um, our clerk will be offer operating the timer. Um, I just ask that you try to be concise and clear and keep your comments within the ballpark of that three minute range, it will start flashing and let you know that you're over time when you are. So for those wanting to come and speak in this item, uh please come forward now and state your name and city of address. Come on, up to the podium there and turn on the microphone. It's up to the applicant if they want to speak now, I don't know if there's applicant here? Uh, it's up to you, whether you want to speak now or whether you want to. Okay, great. Press the button to turn on the red light.
Oh, there we go. My name's Sandra Cook and I lived right in the area of Argent and Road one hundred, two blocks off. And I see the traffic there and I know that Argent is a main access for the schools. We have a numerous schools down there. And I cannot see for the safety of the children going to their school areas adding commercial, whether it be apartments, other commercial buildings, I don't know what's intended. But I want to state my concern for the safety even of the residents in the area. Now, we have a limited amount of homes down there close to the river. Is it gonna draw all the homes way up north and further down by the freeway coming our way? Creating more congestion for the schools, we need to keep that flowing because it gets really crazy. And if you're living there, you can see it. And I'm concerned for safety for children, the high schoolers, the grade school kids and the safety of the kids that are walking to their buses, catching them right there. And I just don't feel it's right. I say keep your commercial areas up in an area maybe closer to the access of the freeway where traffic flows. And that's my opinion.
We appreciate you sharing your opinion with us tonight. Are there any others that would wish to speak? All right, come on up.
I am Ricky, uh I'll pretend this works for me. But you all well know I have a loud and clear voice and uh hopefully not obnoxious. But uh at any rate, I'd like to voice my opposition to this uh application. First of all, there are a number of problems with the area that is actually proposed here, I saw at least three different anyhow, it doesn't work, at least three different figures based on that as well as a lot of buzzwords like walkability that really were not defined or how they're going to implement that or what that what that process is. And it's abundantly clear that they want to develop this area and make it look like and mere quote unquote, the area at Road sixty eight in Argent. Uh, so I would recommend you, you know, reject this proposal on that basis. But it is, in reality, the only way those of us in the Riverview area have of getting in and out of our neighborhood left. Going to the east towards Argent and sixty eight is really just a mess at certain times of the day, getting at sixty eight onto the interstate one eighty two or at Broadmoor on one eighty two can be a mess. This is the fourth and final block to our neighborhood. Getting out of there in an emergency could be a major issue. So I recommend that you vote no on moving this to the City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight. All right, next. He just put it on the podium there and and speak on the microphone there.
All right, my name is Stephen Schlegel. I am, I live at uh ninety four oh three West Richardson Road in Pasco, so I'm a few blocks away from the center section. When I read the application, I'm sorry, it didn't make sense. The city's Comprehensive Plan and the Washington Growth Management Area is supposed to emphasize a promotion of walkable neighborhoods and, you know, walkable businesses and all of that. You don't put walkable businesses right at to a bit uh on the intersection of two of the biggest roads in the area there. It doesn't make sense, I know they said that, but I'm sorry, it does, it does not comply with the Comprehensive Plan or that. Uh, it's not needed, there are other commercial areas uh within a mile or a little more up at I one eighty two and Road one hundred or over at Argent and Road sixty eight. Uh, there's no services lacking in our area, there's no drive for this. And it is, it's a dangerous intersection as it is, this would only make it worse. It's in a pair uh area that is um rural or uh residential and there is just, there there's no reason for it, it doesn't make sense to start changing that uh in our plan to make that a commercial area, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, continuing, anyone else want to speak on this item? Come on up.
I represent the Smith family at uh eighty nine twenty and thirty twelve Argent Road, um this is uh
What is your name?
Jeff Smith.
Okay, thank you.
And and this is uh prepared uh by our family. I wish the person that prepared it was able to be here, they're unable to. A quick tutorial on the land use state law reg regulations, Pasco started hearing hearings on it Comprehensive Land Use in two thousand eighteen and adapted the plan in two thousand twenty one, only two years ago. Public and property owners had many opportunities to help shape the plan, including workshops. The plan is not a simple decision, the state's Environmental Policy Act required an analysis of alternatives and the city considered numerous detailed facts, tremendous public input, developed alternatives and performed extensive analysis. The plan says it covers the next twenty years. Not only two years. Amendments are required every ten years, the plan requ represents a huge colossal decisional this was written up by a family member that's a lawyer decision and is similar to a judicial decision and must be followed until amendment in accordance with the state law and regulations. Pasco adopted the plan through a formal, final E I S or environmental impact statement. Amendments cannot be adapted willy nilly. Any amendments must be based on significant change in circumstances or a significant change of facts. Someone owning two and three quarter acres and wanting something is three-quarter acres and wanting something is not a significant change. The applicant has not identified any significant change. Not every change is significant enough to warrant reopening the plan. If you wanted to proceed, an amendment application must be filed because the LU planning is a quasi judicial action. The city is required to make its findings to support any decision. A finding would be essentially necessary to increase land for mixed residential, commercial, because the LU plan decision, Pasco actually reduced the amount of land designated for mixed residential, commercial. I think the applicant owed, owned the land before the two thousand eighteen LU plans process. And before the plan was adapted in two thousand twenty-one, the applicant should have brought this information and request timely, earlier during the main process. The planning commission should not allow the second bite at the apple, or seeming an attempt to avoid the main public hearings. The second reason the applicant-
You start to wrap up. You've hit your three minutes, so try to conclude quickly.
Okay, oh, oh, there's another page ago. Uh, second reason should the applicant cannot be granted because there is insufficient, insufficient and ineffective notice of public. The, the public, I'll summarize that. The, the area that they sent out notices was poor, poor. Uh, Pasco must foster early and continuous public participation. Third, people are allowed to rely on the plan. And the delicate balance that was decided, it is delicate balance and was based on extensive public input and should be upset only by two years later. People kept their properties, other people bought here, built homes, and relied on the information. Judicial-like decision for what usually people, largest asset, their home. People-
Can I ask you to wrap up? And by the way, you can, I would encourage the family to submit the full letter to staff, and we will put it in the public record.
Okay, I'll, I'll have them email. Uh, thank you for your time.
But I appreciate you being here and sharing your comments, but please submit the, the letter to staff either now or later. All right, anyone else? Please come on up. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Teresa Krujki, and uh, my husband and I have family own a home close to Argent. Um, and I wanted to speak on, when I first heard of this revision, um, of course, it was our home that we, you know, like you said, we had bought um because of the land around it. But the second thing was the safety um of it, kind of um following up on. Uh, because of our close proximity to the river, we have a lot of bikers, we have a lot of walkers. Um, we have a lot of families in the area, uh, strollers, cross-country teams because of the schools and the walking. Um, um, so this, the safety um was that came to mind, and um it's just not conducive to that. And I, I, um, it struck me because two and a half years ago, I was hit by a truck while riding my bike and spent a few weeks in the hospital um by a distracted driver. And that was a place that had a lot of room. Um, and so when you increase the traffic and you increase the family or whatever, you're uh kind of be prone to having um more chances of um somebody being hurt. And I just want you to think about, is it worth that risk? Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your feedback. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Come on up. And state your name and city of address.
My name is Parin Singh, and uh, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought we were meeting to see if this met the criteria, if the uh application can move forward, and not what the concerns may be because we don't know what the plans are yet, so we don't know if the plans are gonna bring more traffic or not bring more traffic. So some of these issues I've heard seem irrelevant right now because we haven't discussed if the uh proposal meets the criteria or not. So if someone has something to say about if the proposal meets the criteria, uh, I would be willing to hear that. Thank you.
I don't want to take up my time, but I have some maps for the, for the guys. Um, they're stacked in three, so if you take three of them, land use map, transit map, and a traffic map.
I'm James Larson. I live at ninety-eight seventeen Star Lane. The application, application criteria is insufficient. Why? I went and got a, a copy of the application. The part of the applicant that is for it to be registered, received date is blank. There is no date. That means we don't know if it was received before May first or after May first. Okay. According to RCW, we don't have enough time. Because if we go by the applicant's signature date, which is February first, we're past the hundred and eight, hundred and eighty days. RCW thirty-six dot seventy A dot three hundred, final order. That means getting through city council. Uh, uh, two A, a hundred eight, a hundred and eighty days from receipt of the petition. So if you take this date, it's passed. If you take May first, you get to November, it's done. November first, it's passed again for following the law of Washington State. Okay, now on to the application. Uh, the applicant says there's sufficient uh, uh, transit. If you look at the transit map there, the transit no longer goes by that corner anymore. It's, it's, it's gone. So that's a deficiency right there. Uh, now we'll look at the uh, the goals and policies of the plan. Uh, it's in conflict with LU one C policy, encouraging conservation design with cluster commercial development and discourage strip commercial development. So if you look at your uh plan map, it gives you a good idea of what the plan is about. And if you look up at the top here, at the areas that are vacant land, look how they have the reds in little blocks, clusters, clusters. You don't have, like in this development by the river here, a little strip mall area. Or over here where the LDS built a, another church, you don't have a, a strip mall put in there. That's the same thing that is going on here, which is not conforming with the plan.
Please uh start to conclude, please.
Well, I have a lot of stuff that's in conflict. It's in conflict with you, uh, LU five goal, maintaining broad range of residential land use designs. You've got low-income housing already. It's a mobile home there. You're getting rid of that where they can farm or do gardening. The corner is a corner house that has a lot for uh farming and gardening. You're getting rid of that. That's in conflict because there's a, uh, another conflict here. Yeah, conflict. H-two goal, preserve and maintain existing housing stock for present and future residents. You're, you're wiping that out. What I see being built in Pasco is small lots, and you're not preserving Riverview with the big lots. Uh, I'm just trying to hit the conflicts here. Uh, H-four goal, support efforts to provide affordable housing to meet the needs of the community. Like I said, mobile home, that's low-income housing.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap your comments pretty quick, and again, you have the same option. You can file um each of these items that you believe are conflicts with staff as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. But James Larson, but I emphasize, it has not met the criteria to be submitted because the deficiency on the application.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if staff has any comment or if you want to research that before commenting, but-
We, we're sure to check any potential conflicts with our attorney, but uh, staff has not, um, staff issued a determination of completeness um on February twenty-second uh and submitted that to the applicant, so it was submitted in, in early February.
Thank you.
Oh, it's not, it's not on my copy. It's not on my copy. It should have been on that form stamped or whatever. So we have no idea.
Thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak on this item? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Ladis Singh. I own the property that we're talking about at this moment. And uh, main purpose here was to get the application process started, which we did. And um, as far as hearing all the concerns from the rest of the people in the, in the room, as far as safety goes, I think that would be well aware. We know what we're, what the plan would be when we get to that level. But right now, we're just to get this application process started and get the application in and take it to a next level, see what happens. But the overall idea was to generate some revenue for the town itself and uh just improve the property look overall. There's a church across the street that has a well-built sidewalks for the people that wants to walk around and uh do cross-country or whatever the thing is. We're, we would shoot the same thing, you know, so everything will be done the way it's supposed to. And right now, the main agenda was to just get the application process going and take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak on this item? Come on up.
I'm Joe Klein. I live on Willow Way, so right around the block there. The statement he just made about making money, our neighborhood is not about making money. Our neighborhood is about families living together. Safety's been brought up with us. He's concerned about putting a gas station in and some apartments. That is not what our neighborhood's about. We already have it on Row one hundred up by the highway. If you want to build more apartments, you want to build gas stations, build them up by the freeway where there's easy access to the freeway. It's a neighborhood. There's million-dollar homes a block away. We don't need that kind of stuff down where, it's a neighborhood, safety, it's what we do. That's why we all moved out there. That's why we paid all the money we paid for our houses. I've lived there twenty-five years. It's a great place to live. It's not a place for commercial. Again, go up to Burton, go up to Row one hundred, build your uh, your gas station up there, please. Leave our neighborhood alone. Let us enjoy our beautiful, safe neighborhood. Joe Klein, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your opinion. All right, anyone else? It looks like we have a number of folks to, haven't talked yet, so come, don't be shy, come on up. We want to hear.
On my personal note, uh, Jeff Smith, uh, joining uh properties, uh, eighty-nine twen- uh, thirty-twelve and uh nine-eight zero eight. The city said they weren't gonna turn Road one hundred into another Road sixty-eight. Well, that's what they're heading for. That's exactly what they're doing. And um, one last note, I believe the property owner on, on the property we're talking about already owns commercial property on Road sixty-eight in Argent. It's already his own commercial. Uh, I would think that would be an appropriate location without even bothering our neighborhood with this situation. So thank you.
I didn't use all my time. I just had to add a comment.
Okay, make it, make it brief.
Anyway, I responded. Um, I'm advanced first aid trained, officer trained and years ago. And I responded going down to Argent. There is an accident where a vehicle hit a car right there in front of the church pav. He was going across the road with his children in one of the carrier carts, and the car hit him. Well, we have enough traffic going on there. We need to keep our area there safe. And I moved there when it was county. It wasn't city at that time, and it all changed. And I didn't want to live in an area looking like Road sixty-eight and how it's starting to look up there um right across the freeway and this side of the freeway. We don't need that. And we need childhood neighborhoods where the kids can ride their bikes, see their friends without all that coming down to where we're a dead end at Road one hundred there, where it's one block down, they're right on the river. And, you know, if you were there, you'd feel the same also. And I don't know how familiar you are with the area, but I know a lot of the folks here are. And so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to speak on this item? All right, I will make a second call. Oh, we got one? Come on up.
I talked last time and whatever, so anyway. Um, my name is Ron Anderson. I live on twenty-nine oh nine Road one hundred, right there on the main street, just two sections down from this property that he proposed. It used to be owned by Ford, and that was owned by Crumbau for years, and it's two and a half acre piece of property. I had one acre property and I, because I'm not movable now like I used to be, I sold off the half acre. And I have a beautiful neighbor living right next to me, and that's wonderful. But most of the other property around there is either half-acre or one-acre lots. Um, to me, this guy, if he wants to really develop it, because you have your plan of your twelve thousand square foot lots and smaller lots, I've laid it out. He could put nine homes in there. Okay? So he still has a lot of advantages. And I'm not sure he's even lived there because I don't recognize him at all. And I've lived there as long as that house has been there, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Shane O'Neil. I represent the applicant. I live in Pasco, Washington, and I'm also working for Clover Planning. You probably recall my testimony from the last meeting, so I won't try to repeat all that. I've taken note of the comments that we've received tonight, um, but what I've not heard is any sound rebuttals to any of these criteria specifically. Um, this, your packet has my full application in it now, and uh, maybe I should assume that you have had the time to review it. I've taken quite a bit of attention to um listing the comprehensive code sections that we meet, but again, that's to be considered at a later date. Uh, might just add one brief explanation that here in the state of Washington, cities have urban growth boundaries. Those are strict boundaries surrounding the city limits, and they, they tightly constrain urban sprawl. That's one of their primary purposes. And in exchange for that, the Growth Management Act encourages infill. And um, I guess you could say a, a diverse array or assemblage of zones and land uses. Um, it seems like strict zoning restrictions are going to the wayside, and a lot of municipalities are choosing to go with form-based uh design. The, the um, the request here is for a mixed residential, commercial land use designation. There are several instances in the city where you'll see that that land use designation already interfaces with low-density residential, especially on the east side of Road sixty-eight towards the city limits on the north. Um, but again, um, you know, our application was received on time, and we already received a determination of non-significance to address the environmental comment. Um, there is no legal preclusion to consider complaint amendments on an annual basis. Please uh allot my client the op, the due process opportunity to be- Please allot my client the the due process opportunity to be considered in detail uh throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to limit your time because you've already had.
I just have one question.
Okay.
When was it received?
Get back to you on that on the exact.
I I want to know.
I don't know that we have that reference right now.
I went and got the request of the copy of the application and the amendment. The the staff box is empty as to when it was received. And that disqualifies on the first one there because the RCW statute says you only have a hundred and eighty days and I'll put it in the record again, RCW thirty-six dot seven A dot three hundred two A.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, staff is concerned, but please feel free to contact staff for the documentation you need.
Does it have to be tonight?
Nope. In fact, probably not tonight. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come and speak on this item? All right, I'll make a second call. And there's no one on the phone, right? Just our commissioners, okay. All right, third call. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and I we really appreciate everybody's feedback. Regardless of your point of view, it's important for us to hear uh what you have to say on this matter. Um, again, we are considering the application based on the criteria. And so I'll turn it back to the commissioners. Are there any further questions or clarifications for staff from the commissioners?
Hello, this is Commissioner Torres. Um, I think for my sake and I think for the public that's there present, um if we could maybe go through uh criteria number four, um and just make sure that I understand what that means. Uh, I think that that criteria is a little bit um, you know, it uses obviously the appropriate words for the planning piece, but um but I think it just would be be helpful, I think, for myself and I think the public to kind of understand that in layman's terms about what does that mean? Uh, what is that question actually asking? Um, and I think uh for myself, it would just help clarify um if that really is meeting um the the yes piece. So um if we could just go through that one more time, I would really appreciate it.
Certainly, Commissioner Torres, uh for this stage of the uh amendment process, it's essentially step one. The intent of asking whether the uh application is in compliance with both the comprehensive plan and the Washington State GMA is uh given deference to the uh initiation of the amendment process. Uh, as I shared um earlier in the presentation, step two of the process uh is where the criteria become much more specific and ask if the merits of the application uh comply with either specific elements of the comprehensive plan or uh relevant uh planning uh principles, goals, objectives, et cetera. So at this stage, the uh the reference regarding the um both the comp plan and the GMA is regarding the initiation of the docket uh process itself as part of the as codified in the Pasco Municipal Code in a conformance with the GMA. Um, the PMC actually, the Pasco Municipal Code actually goes a a little bit further in terms of what is required uh through a formal pre-application meeting, uh required an intake process, the determination of completeness, which is standard for all permits at the city. Uh, but um our process, which was codified and updated, I think about two and a half to three years ago, is is a little bit more in-depth than than many other jurisdictions. But to to answer the question again with regards to this step of the process, a conformance of both the comp plan and the GMA is uh given deference to the deference to uh the initiation of the amendment itself. So did it apply? Did they apply on time? Did they submit a full application? Did they meet with the city? Did they receive an intake letter? Um, did they appropriately fill out the application, et cetera? And 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 does the city actually offer uh the amendment opportunity itself, which which we obviously do?
Okay, thank you. And also, Commissioner Torres, I believe the applicant in your packet on attachment A provided a lot of the question for criteria in terms of the LUAs or LU two, EBD two B and all that. We're all documented in the packet. If you want to take a deeper look at the criteria for that question as well. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Crutchfield.
I had a question for staff about spot zoning because I've I've looked carefully at Clover Planning's um information and the goals and policies from the plan from the city's perspective. And I noticed so the a couple that I feel I need some more information, LU one C. That policy specifically discourages commercial development. And it talks about spot zoning, which I believe that this um potentially is. LU two A, where they talk about um the city is setting aside um areas available, lands available for commercial development. But there is sufficient commercial land set aside in the plan. And I believe the map shows where it is located along the I eighty-two corridor. And I feel that's better located to avoid the adverse effects of just plopping something down in the middle of established neighborhoods. LU three, and this is a goal, not a policy, but apparently it's a desired end objective of the plan. Clearly states the city is to maintain established neighborhoods. Mixed residential, commercial designation would detract from the existing neighborhood because of the obvious conflict, hours of operation, exterior lighting, traffic movements, and we don't even know it's going to be there. LU six B asserting um that this walkable neighborhood concept. I I I'm familiar with that area, the heavy traffic, sidewalks. Um, I I I don't understand the con that concept in that location.
Commissioner Crutchfield, one thing I'd point out is tonight or the all of those questions are super valid questions for the process. And they will be if the applicant were to be accepted, all of that scrutiny for all of those questions would be put on the applicant at multiple stages, not only the land use designation decision, but also the zoning, hearing examiner, city council, any of the project, all of that stuff would be evaluated in the process. So all valid questions, but not necessarily part of this criteria, right? It's that that's part of the valuation for the land use. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, then my question would be, what is the definition of spot zoning? I've heard that amongst this board in these processes before. And I I was wondering what the definition is.
Yeah, I think traditionally spot zoning has been a term used to um used to sort of um describe uh potentially assigning a zone or uh the prescription of a zone for an unfair advantage potentially. Um, so it it's I want to be careful with how I say this, that it's not necessary. This isn't a zone change um proposal. This is a land use proposal. So any zone change would require a separate suite of processes as identified and codified by the Pasco Municipal Code, again, requiring public hearings with the Pasco Hearing Examiner and a final decision um by uh city council and and sometimes spot zoning does come up as a potential conflict in those zone change requests. Um, but at this stage, the criteria is is not with um does not uh have an association with a zone change be because the request is for a land use amendment. A zone change would be potentially required at a later time.
Thank you. So it would be just the first step towards that process, though, is.
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from commissioners, also commissioners on the phone?
Quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Gonzalez, uh the current zoning um low-density residential. What what could potentially be built there in that zoning?
So in the low-density land use, um the permitted residential districts include RS twenty, RS twelve, RS one. So twelve thousand square foot lots, twelve thousand square, twelve thousand square foot lots. Um, R one, I believe, uh would be the highest. Um, and depending on the type of product, you you could go uh from seventy-two hundred square feet, depending on the kind of lot type and product type. Um, that would all be determined based on the potential eventual application of a project would require, depending on what that application is for. Um, could be a traffic analysis. It could be an analysis that includes safe route, school and neighborhood traffic comming measures. It's commercial use. It could be environmental studies, depending on what's proposed, but at at this stage, simply it's just a land use action. So in terms of the permitted zoning districts, it's it's R one, RS one, RS twelve and RS twenty. So seventy-two hundred square feet and could be lower depending on the product type um and higher.
Okay, so, okay, so like um could they would five thousand square foot lots be be permitted?
If I, you know, I don't have the zone district table in front of me. Um, we did approve, um at least to the planning commission, um a suite of changes to the zoning uh code um back in November of last year, but um I I want to s- right now, in terms of the Pasco Municipal Code, I think the smallest lot size is seventy-two hundred square feet.
Okay. Okay, that gives me an idea how many homes could potentially be built on on those two point eight six acres.
Yeah, and if it was a residential development or even a commercial development, um most projects require dedication right away. So setbacks, height restrictions, um so those all eat into the actual developable area. And sometimes those uh let a project move forward. Sometimes they yield the project unfeasible. It it's just simply too early to determine at the land use stage.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I believe Commissioner Lerman has a declaration that we need to enter into the record on this item.
Recusing myself.
Okay, anything else from commissioners on questions or comments for staff? All right, with that and the public hearing closed, discussion of closed, the next, uh I guess our next step is whether I'd entertain a motion. The motion is on page three of your packet for this item. Um, our options are to um proceed with the motion tonight or continue this on. Um, or um there's lots of options. I'll leave it up to the commissioners to make make motions on the next steps here.
This is Commissioner Campos. Uh, first off, I just wanted to um say thank you to our chair. I think you did a fantastic job of explaining to not only uh the commissioners, but also to the community about understanding the process tonight. It is only um discussing the criteria. Did the application meet all of those criteria? And based off of the study that staff did, um it looks like it did. Um, again, that doesn't mean that a certain project is approved or anything. We're just only looking at the application. So uh with that understanding, um I am willing to go ahead and propose a motion if the commissioners are ready to do that.
I heard you right. You're making the motion as staff, the staff recommended motion. Uh, and that's, I think that's Commissioner Mendez, right? Or Campos, there you go. Um, you're making the staff's recommendation. Is that what I heard you moved?
Yeah, I'm ready to do that. I just wanted to make sure that commissioners, if there's any other question the commissioners wanted.
Okay. Um. Well, are you did you make, are you making the motion?
I'm ready to make it. I'll go and say it. I moved the app the application included in September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three staff report be forwarded to the Pasco City Council and that a docket be established for further evaluation for the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan annual amendments.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Handler. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. So I heard, I believe, four nay or four ayes and one nay. Uh, the mission, the ma- the motion passes. Again, this item simply moves the applicant in the next, the first step in the process. Uh, this is only a recommendation to city council. City council will decide this item in their workshop uh in their November workshop, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct. This will be scheduled uh for a November um meeting with the Pasco City Council where they will issue a final recommend decision on establishing the docket. And pending that decision, if um there's a decision to place it on the docket, it will be established via a resolution. And then it's kicked back to staff to actually evaluate via the criteria mentioned earlier and then it'll be back in the planning commission um if moved forward at some point in early twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much. And those who spoke on this item tonight, I would encourage you uh to come for the city council hearing as well or the city council proceedings and express your same views and opinion for city council because we are recommending body appointed appointed by the city council. City council will actually decide this item. So um I would encourage you to, again, use your public voice in that forum as well. So with that, uh we have gotten through our agenda tonight. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. Anybody have any other business? Okay, then if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
One one quick note, um this was asked at the September meeting, I wanted to let the uh commissioners know that um that we will uh introduce the election of chair and vice chair at the November meeting and then recommendations um and a vote at the January twenty twenty-four meeting. And then as described in the bylaws by the planning commission, for the planning commission, uh those new chairs would uh take uh effect in February of twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you for following up on that. Yeah, so commissioners, um if you have interest in the chair, vice chair, um please come November, uh ready to discuss that or thinking about that. The other option is we also have the option to promote our vice chair, which is Commissioner Mendez. So that's another option we have is to just move to vice chair to chair and retire me. Um, or we can uh put a new slate of folks uh together as well. So just keep keep uh think about that, what you want to have done. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I move to adjourn this meeting. I second that motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-eight P M.